All right, thank you, Brian, and welcome everyone to this May 8, 2023, meeting of the Homewood City Council. We're going to start off with a proclamation tonight. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a proclamation for the American Heart Association. If I could have Josh Till from the Heart Association come up here and join me. And we will read this out. So whereas the mayor of Homewood, Alabama, is committed to supporting a thriving, vibrant, and healthier community for all residents of all ages and abilities, whereas approximately one in five children and two in five adults in the U.S. have obesity, and one in two adults live with a chronic disease, and about half of this group have two or more chronic diseases; and whereas about one in four young adults, or 25%, is too heavy to serve in our military; and whereas the physical activity guidelines for Americans recommend that children ages six to 17 years do 60 minutes or more of moderate to vigorous intense physical activity each day, and adults ages 18 and older to do at least 150 minutes a week of moderate intensity activities such as brisk walking; and whereas only half of adults and one quarter of youth get the recommended amount of aerobic physical activity they need to help reduce and prevent chronic diseases; and whereas physical activity is vital for healthy aging and can reduce the burden of chronic diseases and prevent early death; and whereas physically active people generally live longer and are at less risk for serious health problems like heart disease, type 2 diabetes, obesity, and some cancers; and for people with chronic diseases, physical activity can help manage these conditions and complications; and whereas physical activity can benefit the workforce because physically active people tend to take fewer sick days, and walkable communities can improve traffic safety for people who walk, ride bicycles, and drive; and whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention of the CDC is leading Active People Healthy Nation, a national initiative to help 27 million Americans become more physically active by 2027; and whereas communities can support Active People Healthy Nation by implementing one or more of seven evidence-based strategies recommended by CDC to increase physical activity across sectors and settings; whereas building active and walkable communities can help increase levels of retail economic activity and employment, increase property values, support neighborhood revitalization, and reduce healthcare costs; whereas individual effort alone is insufficient to improve opportunities for people to be physically active, and significant policy systems and environmental changes are needed to support and protect individual efforts to make healthier choices; and whereas the government of Homewood, Alabama, recognizes its ability to expand achievable, measurable, and sustainable efforts to increase physical activity across the community by supporting Active People Healthy Nation strategies; and whereas it is important to ensure that longtime residents have the opportunity to benefit from increased community investment and that community improvement projects do not result in community displacement; and whereas reducing barriers in access to safe and equitable public spaces for people of color to be physically active is important in addressing existing health disparities; and whereas Active People Healthy Nation strategy can be designed to support the goal of inclusive access to opportunities for physical activity. Now therefore, I, Patrick McCloskey, Mayor of the City of Homewood, Alabama, recognize that physical activity is one of the best things adults, children, and families in Homewood can do to improve their health. The City of Homewood hereby commits to supporting Active People Healthy Nation strategies by implementing the following strategies. There's a lot of strategies in there. Sorry about that. Active-friendly routes to everyday destinations and access to places for physical activity and to give special consideration for all status and access to physical activity facilities and resources. In witness thereof, I have said I cause my hand, the great seal of the city, Homewood, to be affixed this fourth day of May 2023. That's it. There you go. And Jennifer will be on page two.
Yeah, that's been great. Thank you so much.
Do you want to say a few words about the Heart Association? You owe more than one.
Well, I'll just add my thanks to Mayor McCloskey and Councilor Sims for doing this. And just to say, you know, obviously, you heard the benefits of physical activity is something that we urge at the American Heart Association is just to move more, to get it, you know, any way that you can. And so we appreciate the City of Homewood, all the support that you give to us, not just here during this proclamation, but all throughout the year, lighting up red in February during Heart Month, just bringing awareness of heart disease and stroke. So thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jennifer.
All right, next, we have a presentation from Meredith Drennan of our Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Oh, no problem.
Thank you so much for having me here today. Over the last five months, Mayor McCloskey and I have been working together on some ideas we had to really highlight our small business community. We know that small businesses are the backbone of our economy. We know that small businesses make Homewood really what it is. It's the fabric of our community. And really wanted to find a way to connect the city directly to those small businesses. And I think we all know that our combined efforts really are much more than the sum of their parts, especially when it comes to social media. Our social media accounts are ways of communicating with our members in the community and really kind of using all those things together to put together a program we're calling Small Business Spotlights. So we've actually launched, as of today, we have live on our website at homewechamber.org forward slash small biz, a Google form where businesses can nominate themselves for these spotlights. With those spotlights, you get social media from the chamber, social media hopefully from each of their counselors, which we know really goes far and wide to highlight those businesses and show how much we appreciate them, and a number of other benefits, including some photography sessions and a certificate and a presentation of really to show off these businesses. It's a great way to highlight businesses that are reaching a milestone. I know we have a number of those these years, this year, and really hope that we have all of your buy-in on this as well. So the website is live, the Google form is live. If you want to include this in any of your newsletters, just follow the chamber on social media and you can share those posts as well. When something comes up in your individual ward, we will be giving you step-by-step instructions to help get involved and to really support the program. So we hope that it's not too much effort on your part either, but it's something that we feel like is very, very important to our small business community. So thank you, Mayor, for coming up, this is your brainchild, and letting the chamber be involved with it as well. I have put together-
Just a quick fact sheet, if you guys want to pass those around, it would all for you.
And please note that this, you know, certainly is one of those thousands of ideas that roll around in the old noodle, but Meredith was actually able to make this come alive, and I certainly appreciate her incredibly hard work over the last several months to put this together. And we really are looking forward to really putting this out there in the community and kind of, you know, changing, you know, how we're representing the small businesses within the city, so.
But like I said, the combination of all of our efforts is much more than the sum of its parts. We see that all the time in social media campaigns. When something can get shared, it really becomes viral, and that's what we want. We want not just Homewood to know about our small businesses, but really all across the state, all across the region, to know how important Homewood small businesses are. I think we have the best small business community in the United States and just want to show off everything that they can do. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, can you provide a little more information on the luncheon for this month with Alabama Power? I didn't really understand what that was about.
So we have dedicated programming at each of the chamber luncheons. You'll see, obviously, January is State of the City. This month, it's workforce preparedness. We have a great, obviously, you know, education program in Homewood. We have amazing city schools, but we have businesses sometimes that have a hard time filling their job openings. And sometimes those are for people that don't necessarily graduate from a four-year institution. That is where we're trying to connect the dots, and Alabama Power is very supportive of that. So we are having the executive director of Central Six Alabama Works come to speak to our members, specifically from that workforce preparedness side of the equation. Obviously, last month, we had our Excellence in Education Luncheon, which really highlights our K-12 education. This is just the next step.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Meredith. We appreciate it. All right, so with that, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we will start with an invocation from Mr. Jones, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If anyone will please stand.
If you'll bow your heads with me. Mighty and merciful Lord, as this day draws to a close, we pause to give you thanks and praise. We thank you for the wonderful weekend we all had with our families, and we love Homewood, and we certainly do love Homewood. We thank you for all of the employees that help make Homewood special. Thank you for all of the residents. Thank you for all of the educators within the school system that make Homewood what it is. We thank you for the American Heart Association, as we've talked about tonight, and the impact they've made within the world. We thank you for all of our many blessings, and in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Praise the flag. And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Salter, if you will, please call roll.
Yes, sir. Councilor Gaultier, here. Councilor Alamon, Councilor Wolverton, Councilor Sims, Councilor Jones, Councilor Smith, Councilor Nels, Councilor Andres, Councilor Harden, and President Wyatt.
Here.
You got two absentees that are at the forum.
All right. Next, we have the reading of the minutes from our council meeting of April 24, 2023. Those were previously distributed. I entertain a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of those minutes and for approval of the same.
So moved.
All right, motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Wolverton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are approved nine to zero. Board vacancies. First, we have one position to appoint tonight, I believe, is the Ward Two Beautification Board.
Yes, sir. We interviewed two applicants last week. Now, Nick, are we? Sorry.
Right, no, I understood that. I was talking to the other one.
Yeah, I'm going to open the second.
Yeah, so we had two great candidates. We had to pick one. And so for right now, we've selected Mary Michael Kelly, but it sounds like there is another-
Yeah, so let's handle that first. So we have a motion for Mary Michael Kelly. Do we have a second?
Second.
So a motion from Mr. Wolverton, a second from Mr. Sims. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is nine to zero. Congratulations to Ms. Kelly.
She's getting the Ward Two place, right?
Ward Two.
Correct.
Correct. So then we have four positions to open on the beautification board.
Another four.
Yeah. So there's a Ward Three, a Ward Five, and two at large. And we are going to open those for two weeks. Is that correct, Mr. Sims?
Yes, that would be great.
So we'll-
We have a couple of candidates who are interested in reapplying and also would like to carry over the interest of the previously interviewed candidate from Ward Two. So we feel like we could appoint all of them, or at least most of them, in two weeks.
Great. So those will close on May 22 at 4:30. No, Ms. Salter, so, yeah, if you will, just send Ms. Salter an email about it, but, or either one.
You said Ms. Salter listed.
No, no, I was saying, send to Ms. Salter the name so that she would know.
Sure.
So, yeah, no, no. One of the candidates from Ward Two is interested in the at-large spot, and so we'll just hold that person's resume for the, one of the at-large positions.
Okay. Yeah, just let me know who it is, and I can make sure they know that they're technically applying for that.
Sure.
All right. All right, so that's it for board vacancies tonight. We do have a few additions to the agenda.
And I missed that, I was thinking about this bit, and you're closing out on the 22nd.
22nd at 4:30.
Okay, sorry, okay. I'm with you, back with you, I promise.
Okay. The first item is being added both to committee referral and to other new business. It is 06-05-23, request to set a bid date for a paving project brought to us by Berkeley Squires, and that will go to Finance Committee, and then, as I said, also other new business just to set the bid date tonight. Next item, 07-05-23, request for a resolution in favor of the Red Mountain Cut Foundation and Jefferson County Commission Tap Grant Request brought to us by Bryson Stevens and Councilor Andres. That will go to Planning and Development. Then the last item, 08-05-23, also added to committee referral, request for consideration of economic development incentives for potential retail businesses located at 195 Oxmore Road slash 536 Cobb Street, brought to us by Village Creek Development and S-H-A-L-L-C, and that will go to Finance. So with those additions, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Wolverton, second from Ms. Andres. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved nine to zero. Which brings us to our consent agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Wolverton, second from Ms. Andres. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also approved nine to zero, which brings us to Old Business, 11-04-23, request for consideration to amend fiscal year 22-23 budget brought to us by Robert Riggat and Melody Salter. And we'll start with a report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met Monday, May the 1st, and after deliberation, voted five to zero to recommend approval of this item.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved nine to zero and will be Resolution 2367. Next item, 12-04-23, request for permission to work in the right-of-way to replace a fence adjacent to 10-04 Edgewood Boulevard brought to us by James and Kate Morris and Wyatt Pugh. And we will start with a report from Public Works. Mr. Wolverton?
Yes, Councilor. Council President, we met and the committee voted five to zero to recommend approval. Pending the proper indemnification agreement, this motion was made by Councilor Sims and seconded by Councilor Gere. And this, just to clarify, is a fence that currently exists that's been there longer than anybody around here knows, and they're simply replacing it as it's been through the test of time and needs some attention.
Okay, so we have a motion from Public Works. Any questions or comments? Mr. Jones?
Yeah, two quick things. Thank you to the Morrises for bringing this to us before they did it, and secondly, for doing it in the first place, replacing an older fence. So I appreciate both counts. That's what we're looking for in those improvements, so just wanted to make those two comments.
Somebody must have guided it well.
All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also nine to zero and will be Resolution 2368. Next item, 06-04-23, public hearing set for June 12, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration to vacate a portion of unnamed city right-of-way adjacent to 328 Redfern Street brought to us by David Mitchell and Wyatt Pugh. We will carry that item over for the public hearing on the 12th, which brings us to the committee referral agenda, or, I'm sorry, the amended committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of that amended agenda. Motion for Mr. Harden, second from Mr. Wolverton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved nine to zero, which brings us to other new business, 03-05-23, request for consideration of an ABC O-20 restaurant retail liquor license for Pranzo Pronto LLC DBA Freddy's Cafe located at 1706 Oxmore Road brought to us by Melody Salter. This, they still need their letter from fire, from police, and they need their CO, but they've asked if we can go ahead and offer our lack of objection contingent upon those three things being achieved by them, so.
I'm not sure you will make sure all three of them before we-
I don't doubt it. So if anyone would like to make a motion to that-
Move to approve.
A second.
Contingent to having no objections.
Yeah.
No objections.
All right, so a motion from Mr. Wolverton, second from Ms. Smith as to having no objections to the issuance of the license pending the letter from fire, police, and getting their CO. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved nine to zero. Next item, 04-05-23, request for consideration of an ABC O-20 restaurant retail liquor license for Weird Fishes LLC DBA Whiskey Foxtrot Burger Dive located at 1919 28th Avenue South, Suite 113, also brought to us by Melody Salter. This is the same situation. They still need all three, so any motion would need to be pending receipt of each of those.
Motion pending approval without any objection from police, fire, and-
CO.
The CO.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Wolverton as having no objections.
Second.
Second from Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also approved nine to zero, which brings us to 05-05-23, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of April 25, 2023 through May 8, 2023, brought to us by Robert Riggat and Melody Salter. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Yeah, I reviewed them, and there were several questions. A quick report, we are making great progress on the, for the police department, for the body cameras. We approved 10 more, and we're nearing the end of getting every, that taken care of for the entire police department, so pleased with that. And with that, I'll move to approve the vouchers for April 25 through May the 8th.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Jones, a second from Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also nine to zero and will be Resolution 2369. Last item, 06-05-23, request to set a bid date for a paving project brought to us by Berkeley Squires. Do we know when this public hearing, I'm sorry, when this bid date needs to be set?
I've got to bid it three weeks.
Three weeks out from tonight?
Yeah.
It's got to be bid three times.
If I can, that's why I say, if I can do it, if you set it tonight, and I advertise it, and I tell you tomorrow, it's into the messenger in the tent, if I can, it'll be one week, two weeks, three weeks, and then we're off to 29. So I'm thinking the earliest we could do it, so I was asking Mr. Kendrick, was June 5th, committee, y'all would vote on on 12. Is that, is June 5th doable?
You're looking at the other.
I think, sure, but that's still is the next week, the play, since it's Homewood Day Week, too. I'm thinking and hoping with Volker that we can do it on the June 5th committee, have the bid opening that day before.
Okay, so you're going to set it for June 5th at 4:30?
I was saying it was the 12th, but that was the council meeting, y'all would be taking action on it, so.
Correct. So June 5th at 4:30? Okay?
4:45, 4:31, so they can get their bids in till 4:30, whatever you want to do. We normally take bids till 4:30.
4:30.
The opening is three, ten.
Okay, yeah, so we're setting the bid opening?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so we'll set the bid opening for 4:45.
Yes.
Bids will have to be in by 4:30.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay. No, 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 that's fine. Just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
So we're on 6, we're at 6:5, bids can be received till 4:30, and the opening's at 4:45.
Yep. Does that work for you, Mr. Jones?
That works.
Okay. All right, and that is the end of the agenda tonight. Mr. Mayor?
12:47, Alex.
Someone emailed Peter Wright.
Timmed it. 12:47.
Very, very well done.
It was more than that, but I don't know what it was.
Yeah, it was excellent, excellent work. No, just very, very briefly, the amount of work that goes into We Love Homewood Day, you know, I know everybody up here understands it, but, you know, I certainly want the citizens and our businesses and everybody to know how hard our city employees, our volunteers, our, you know, it's just, it's amazing how many people actually put time and effort into a full day's work like that that we all get to enjoy. So, you know, I want to say thanks to all the city employees from the police and fire who are always on standby for safety reasons, certainly to the police for the escorting and the barricades for the 5K in the morning, all of the small businesses that showed up for the, to have booths and everything in the park, and then, of course, the Park and Rec Department, especially Rusty Holly, for putting everything together from the parade to the street dance. It just, it's literally one of my favorite days of the year. It's tiring, and I know I saw a lot of you throughout the day, and that evening, I tried to jet out as quickly as I could because I was incredibly tired. But I also want to say congratulations one more time publicly in meeting to Scott Thorne, who was awarded the Citizenship Award along with being the grand marshal in the parade. His contributions to Homewood High School, specifically in the show choir department over the last couple of decades, has been very, very impressive, being a show choir guy myself. At Homewood, it was really great to see that legend live on, so we're looking forward to DeBir Muscarra and his group taking over from now, from now on, so, but that's it.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Ms. Gere?
I don't have any announcements tonight. I accept that. I was sorry that I missed We Love Homewood Day, but I was at my daughter's graduation, and it was a beautiful day for a graduation.
Congratulations.
And We Love Homewood Day looked incredible. The pictures were awesome, and Arts Council looked like they had a lot of fun at their spot, so anyway, hated to miss it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
Yeah, just a few things. We, obviously, we, I've heard about several people on the council having children graduate and have big upcoming events. We're about to have an incoming middle schooler, and that's, that's big news in our house. But I just wanted to thank the schools for all that they've done to kind of prepare them. I have not heard of any of these fifth graders that are really nervous about it. I think they do a great job about educating them about it, bringing them out, you know, showing them around, letting them play drums or clarinet, or, you know, try everything out. And so she's, she's very excited about this transition, and I think that that speaks volumes just to what the school system does and all those people that are involved in that process. I wanted to echo what the mayor had to say about Parks and Rec. I know David and, you know, Bo and Rusty all, you know, pour a ton of time into We Love Homewood Day. I'm glad that we had weather that cooperated. I know in the past, that's, we put a lot of effort into it, and things have gotten rained out or whatever, but I think everybody had a great time. We did as well, although, to your point, we were all just fatigued. We'd been out at the soccer field since about 8 o'clock that morning. And then we had a, the Girls on the Run, Run was actually around our neighborhood this year. They moved it from Birmingham last year. So, you know, again, just, I think the city does a great job with the hospitality that we provide to kind of bring in and promote some of those races and the causes that they bring with them. And then secondly, or lastly, I guess, I just wanted to say thank you to most of the Homewood fans that I've been around and the coaches that invest in our kids. We were, Carlos and I, were actually at our daughter's soccer game first thing Saturday morning and got to observe the opposing coaches, or the opposing coach get kicked out of the game for semantics and berating the ref and just, just kind of conduct that was unbecoming. So I'm glad that our coaches that we've been involved with have been able to kind of maintain a level head and just, especially, you know, that was kind of home turf, and I'm glad that, glad to see that everybody could kind of act actively, so. But yeah, that's it. I think, did we, I don't remember seeing anything, so I don't plan on holding.
You have a new item, though, so you should say.
No, no new items.
Oh, no, no. I didn't take that one off.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I got you, sorry.
Yeah, so I do not plan on calling Public Works next, next week.
All right. Mr. Sims?
Thanks so much. Just, first of all, I'd like to thank the mayor for collaborating with the Heart Association on the proclamation this evening. Also, in reference to soccer, very excited about the boys' and girls' team for the high school competing in the state semifinal this week, so cheering them on, and also congratulations to the track team, which won state. And finally, just like to go back to We Love Homewood Day. It was fantastic. You know, as y'all referenced, it was a long day. I went there in the morning with my kid, midday, in the evening, and I saw the same people there, which was our amazing city staff and employees, you know, executing a phenomenal event. And I think about that, you know, we do this part-time, most of them are doing it full-time, making our city as great as it is. You know, a lot of times, they get the negative feedback, and then they come and they in-service to our community and do a great event like that, like We Love Homewood Day. And I think about that, you know, we do this part-time, most of them are doing it full-time, making our city as great as it is. You know, a lot of times, they get the negative feedback, and then they come, and they in-service to our community and do a great event like that, like We Love Homewood Day. And so, just wanted to express my appreciation for city staff, and you, Mayor, for the administration working with the great team that serves our city every day. I mean, really, we're indebted to them, because we have a phenomenal city, so thank you to you and the entire team at the city that makes Homewood so great, that we love, and we love them. We love our people, you know, in service to our community, so thank you.
President Wyatt, I'm sorry, do we need to set public safety?
Nope.
You just have two old items on there, but it's okay?
Yeah, it's okay.
So you're not setting anyone?
Nope, we're not gonna set it. Thank you, though. Mr. Jones?
Finance at 5:00, and I talked to Mr. Thorne after the parade. He said, "If I'd known I'd be treated like this, I would have retired five years ago." I thought that was pretty funny. But great, great job, Ms. Melody, with getting the parade together, and it was, it was a great time held by all. And then, I know Ms. Andres might mention this a little bit as well, but she and I got to go down to Mobile for the, for the men's, or the boys' tennis state championship, and we're so happy that we're able to get runner-up for that, so Will did a great job in Winston, so proud of them, but just a great, great overall weekend, last few weekends have been great, so that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Don't have to set special issues. Homewood Historic Preservation Commission is meeting tomorrow night here at 7:00. Melody, can you let Bo know, or whoever, to keep those doors unlocked? I'm making myself a note right now. Okay, 'cause I think last time, they, I don't know how, they said they weren't open, but that's the night we were interviewing all the candidates, and they somehow got in? I don't know. But anyway, tomorrow night, 7:00.
Tried to make sure they stayed open.
Yeah, you told me, 'cause you told me right at the beginning that that's what the case. I also missed We Love Homewood Day, because I also had a graduation and a commissioning ceremony to go to, so Thomas is now officially an ensign in the Navy, and we'll be going, and we'll be going to flight school. He's actually headed to San Diego for a month next week, and then we'll come back here and then head to Pensacola for flight school to become a naval flight officer. And I, you know, I love all my park people on the park board liaison, and those, those guys and girls work so incredibly hard. We have two new folks who are on the staff now, and I saw both of them in pictures from We Love Homewood Day, so they jumped right, put their feet right into the fire and got busy going. And I know, you know, I was thinking, I was like, I hope they all get to take off, like, today from work, but Hardy is doing pool prep to get the pools ready, and Jacob was there bright and early to get, to help Hardy get ready to start power washing everything at both the pools. So, you know, they work really hard, and they do a really good job, and they just deserve all the appreciation that we give them, because they work, they work for it, so thank them. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Ms. Nels?
Gotta give more kudos to the city folks, and Rusty, and all of them. I always volunteer to be there with Rusty every morning to set up vendors, and I'm there from when the first vendor arrives, the last one gets there. And when I leave, it's like everything's all laid out, and I just smile and get in my car. And then I come back midday, and, you know, do the routine, and then come back for the band support. And all I can say is, We Love Homewood Day is the greatest show on earth. That's all I got.
Thank you. Ms. Andres?
Well, I do need to set P and D, which is so weird, that you don't have to set special issues, and I need to set P and D. I will start with the 5K, because the mayor, first of all, thank you for the official last-place finisher duties. So I know you and the dog got to follow behind the tubas to be the official last-place finishers, but I will tell you...
It was nice of you to sacrifice, to be last.
Well, he wanted to win, he was up at the front, and I said, "No, no, 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 Mayor, we need a last-place finisher officially."
We appreciate you not winning.
Yep, exactly. Well, it was crazy, so that's your duty, my duty is always to help with the 5K. I always help check people in at the 5K, and so at 6:00 a.m., I'm with Chris Cooper, putting out banners for the sponsors, with Mary Scott Pearson, who's in charge of the sponsors, and then, so we head over to, again, there were almost 1,200 people that were registered, and so we head over, and official registration was supposed to close at 7:00, and people are still coming at 7:00, and so we had to open it back up again, and it was very chaotic. A woman drove 40 miles an hour down Manhattan, tried to go through the arch and over the mats, and Jeff Martinez, if you've ever seen a grown man scream, Jeff Martinez came out and stopped her, but she was like, she was not slowing down and going under that arch over those mats. It was very scary. But people were, there were so many people that wanted to run, people were coming up at 7:25, and we were out of bibs. I mean, there were 1,200 people, it was crazy, so it was just so, the thing is that everybody loves this band, and this was a fundraiser for the band in Ireland, and it was just so well done, and I know Chris Cooper's gonna order some more T-shirts. So anyway, that's my big story from the day, which I had a great time, it was so fun. I do want to mention, I want to thank Amber Broadhead, she invited me on Friday to Edgewood Elementary School, and so I went and got to present to the entire fourth grade. So all of you all were represented to the fourth grade, so I put a picture up of everybody and pointed everybody out, and the mayor, and I said, "Does anybody know Ms. McCluskey? Does anybody know this guy right here?" And everyone's like, "Oh, oh, oh, that's the mayor." So I got to talk to them about representative government and the differences between, you know, federal, and then state, and then county, and then the city, and then what we do at the city, and then I took them through sort of a, you know, you want to get a crosswalk, here's what we do, and I really had a great, they were great kids, they were just fantastic kids. I know we love football, but let's talk about what's going on right now. Track and field, boys just won state. We just won tennis for the first time since 1987, runner-up, and then soccer's in the Final Four. I mean, these sports are the, I know football's great, but these are the best, so I just want to give it up to all the athletes. Sorry, football, we love you, but so fun, these sports are so much, just have it all go on at the same time, it's so fun, and, yeah, big spring.
And by best, you mean that they're all great, right? There you go.
I'm just saying, football gets all the press, but, but right now, exactly, right now, we got soccer, and tennis, and track and field, and I was very dramatic, by the way, track and field was very dramatic, it, they, every, same thing with tennis, it was like every point counted, every player counted, every event counted. I mean, it was a last-minute thing, it was not, you know, it was not a shoe-in for them either. And I just, good luck to all the grads, all the grads. John, I've got a grad on the toilet, so wrapping up. Anyway, that's all I got, I know that was a lot, I'm sorry, I know we're trying to get out of here, but I did have a lot to say, so...
No problem. Mr. Harden?
Well, after all that, you know, you've heard of FOMO, fear of missing out, how about SOFMO, sorry for missing out? There was no way I was gonna be able to participate Saturday, and I hated that. And next time someone's getting married on We Love Homewood Day, we're gonna tell them to change their date. But I did, I did today make it, and I appreciate everybody's work, even though I didn't even get to participate, but I did make it to the Birmingham Convention and Visitor Bureau luncheon today. And I was our sole person, but that was fine. And it was Greg Sankey, and he spoke, and so after, so I went ahead, Mr. Kendrick would love this, I went ahead and gave him a very hard time about letting the University of Texas in. They said, "Does anybody have any questions?", you know, and I said, "What were you thinking? And he went through this whole thing from 2015, and why the Big 12 was gonna fall apart, and so I just, but afterwards, I got to go talk to him, because, y'all may not know this, but he is a constituent of Ward Five, so I said, "I'm one of your city councilors, but you may not know me." He goes, "No, my wife knows Jennifer."